It's 10:00 AM, January 2nd, 2019. Wilson County Court Special Session is now a session as we will. About your prayers. Heavenly Father, we bow our heads and look before you to give you thanks and ask for your blessing. We thank you for the year we had before this, for 2018, for all the things that you have blessed us with during that year. When we ask you bless us with a new year of prosperity and everybody that has anything to do with Wilson County. And we all work together in unison to make Wilson County one of the best counties in the state of Texas. This we ask in the open name of your name.
I thank all the divisions to the flag on the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with thy teaching and justice for all. Honor Texas life, our flag, allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Would be time alone to adjoint two public comments.
Yes, may you have somebody who would like to make public comment? Jan Mollville, come on.
Jan Mollville?
Yes, yes. I came to you this morning because the county's going to be purchasing the show barn. And they asked if Christina could show the show barn. She knows she's my first assistant. If she could show the show barn, you know, the other guy was going to handle everything else, but all she was going to do was show him. He was going to handle the contract, the bookings and all that. Well, last week I was informed that Christine's going to be doing it all. The bookings, the contracting, the police, the rampaula 24/7. And my office has a pretty heavy load workload that it is. And if it would just win the bookings, it would have been fine, but it's kind of turning into like a full-time position. And I can't help her doing that full-time and being my first assistant also. So I just wanted to rejoin with that this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. And now we're going to adjoint three, which is the Jackson County Judge. Establish a budget for the Wilson County Expo Community Center.
Okay, you have so. And this is for y'all to discuss what y'all feel is best fit. I, the expenses at the show barn submitted are on the far right. And I came up with some numbers on the far left. And I want you guys to be able to discuss that. The payroll part comes, since we don't know what it needs for the person out there. I figure $20 a week or $15 an hour is what the total cost would be if we have that. Okay, consider we need more. I don't know. Those who have come in here are numbers I can't come up with them. And then the cleaning and insurance repairs and all that. So that's the total number that I came up with, 45 days right now for a whole year, even though nine months. Starting in January, we'll do by 63, I'll take 56. So y'all want to discuss the line of line, starting with payroll personnel. I'm not sure how y'all are going to discuss that.
How did we come up with the?
We didn't acknowledge the facility when you wrote the calls needing to.
How did you come up with these numbers off of bare data?
The numbers on the left side, I just figured and I wrote down what I thought of the cost of mine.
How did you come up with that figure? What did you use to come up with that figure?
For the payroll?
For all of them. The side of repairs?
Well, if you look at the cleaning, Commissioner Folling said the cleaning would be $125.
It's $150.
$150, okay, times how many a week? See, I don't know. I'm forward here discussing.
I mean, I'll talk about repair now. You said it's going to cost $5,000 a year. The list station will only cost $4,000 a year. Yes, yes, repair. And that's, these down here are always saying that.
Commissioner Folling, you're going to make my phone over here. It's easier to hear.
And another thing we discussed before was trying to make this complex ADA compliant. We don't have any of that, but it's all here.
What is it that we don't have?
Any figures we make.
Well, this is why, this is why we're here. We're here to discuss.
That's why we came up with these figures, Tom, because we're not addressing anything we need to do to bring this. To be done and to make an ADA compliant. Well, we have to be able to have wheelchair access on here that's recognized by the ADA people throughout the entire county. Throughout the entire county. Any place that the public has access, then we have to make an ADA compliant.
Commissioner Hyatt, can you tell me where you were here? Is there anything ADA compliant there?
A wheelchair can get anywhere on that complex.
But Commissioner Hyatt, we're here at a workshop to establish numbers. These aren't concrete numbers.
Right, that's what, well, that's your fault. Do you have any numbers?
I don't have any numbers. I'm just saying, we have to go home. We haven't done it. I put it against by this place because we didn't know what the numbers were to fix this thing right. We need to figure that out.
Okay, I understand, and I know.
It's a liability on the county if we don't get everything compliant. I guess that the budget, $9,000.
I don't know about, okay, the front part of the barn, the front part of the banquet hall is ADA compliant. It's been operating for the last 50 years.
I hope.
And it has, it has, what's that?
It's never been checked.
Okay, well, if ADA comes out and says that we aren't compliant, we will pick compliant. But right now, that's, can I, excuse me.
It's a tax if they refine it after that, Judge. I can't wait for them to come out here and say, you need to fix it. Because when they do, they say, here's the $4,000 lot of fires that I have. We have to be proactive in fixing this.
We are, okay. We're going to, I guess, go out and look at it. Okay. The front part has got the handicap for the parking, handicap for the entrance, handicap for the bathrooms. I don't know what else it needs.
Are the grab bars in the bathrooms?
The what?
Are the grab bars in the bathrooms?
Yes, as far as I'm understanding, yes. They have handicapped stalls. I haven't been in the windows.
We need to check all of them. Since we're going to do this, let's feel right.
Oh, I understand, okay.
I mean, this budget here is anywhere close to.
Let's come up with a budget, that's why we're here.
That's what we're here.
Let's get that point on maybe.
Okay, well, let's get started. Is there any, is there just arguing?
I'm not arguing.
Okay, let's get started. Oh, establish a, okay, every time I talk, you talk off.
Well, I'm just trying to.
Okay? So when I talk, I walk the floor, okay? Because, okay, go ahead. But when I'm talking and you start, which that happens quite a bit. And it happens, I'm not going to say, say, you're the older one, but I don't, I usually just relate with the floor when that happens. And I'd like to just keep talking. But, okay, if you want to give some numbers, or, I don't know, we have to have a price on the repair of the list station. We didn't. Okay, I thought we had to look into somebody that was going to come out and repair. Okay, and then we need to get that.
Well, Judge, should we start with payroll or what kind of payroll? What kind of help can we have? Start with that and then go down.
I mean, go back to payroll. If the county treasurer does not want her going to be any part or don't think she has time to be any part, then we have to hire someone. That's the point, I mean, that's the point light. And that's what I told her last week. You know, if you feel that this person cannot do both jobs, then we have to hire someone.
Can I speak on that call?
Go right ahead.
Okay, just like I said, I was approached that she was only going to be showing up at the show barn. Not last week I was told that she'd be doing anything else. And I just, I, I just, she just payroll in that office.
Okay, well.
I'm sorry.
We have to address that, and if you feel that.
I'm sorry.
And then we have to look at looking, that's going to change.
But if she has time to do that for hours.
Not do everything, the showings, yes.
That's still a very good question. When he's, huh, let him look at his voice.
Yes, we have.
Can you hire someone $15 an hour or $20 a week? Like I said, I have no way.
I have no idea because we want to count on that. I mean, this is something that I thought everybody was on agreement that she was going to do. So that's where it was at. And she wouldn't, it wouldn't be no $20 an hour or $15 an hour because it's already coming out. And you were going to get a part-time employee.
Right, but that part timer can't make up for what my full timers doing.
I don't know how much time it's going to take a person.
Well, that's.
I mean, I have no idea.
That's, that's my problem too. I don't know. I have no idea what it's going to take.
And we would have to pay her also about $1,000 per hour of work. We couldn't have just made her an employee. There's certain criteria you have to meet.
She would have talked about that, she would have.
I mean, you're saying because she has to be a supervisor or a manager. That doesn't get it. To be a supervisor to qualify for exempt status, you have to be able to hire a fire, circulate, set hours and everything else. And she wouldn't do that. That's what makes her an employee, not just a hire.
Why wouldn't she?
Why wouldn't she want?
Do that? Hire a fire, if she's, if she's over somebody, why wouldn't she be?
Who's she going to be over?
What's that?
Who's she going to be over?
Well, a maintenance person, a person doing the cleanup.
Well, who's that? Why are we using maintenance employees here to do that? Or we hire more maintenance people to?
They move here from here.
Okay, well then.
There won't be technical jobs here. We have a part-time individual that's going to do that. And her day's off. Not one of the full-time boys, she's a part-time boy.
Well, it is.
But she's still going to be paid on account, right?
Yes.
So her day off, she's a part-timer who just is losing a day off.
We're guessing that we got paying her contract later.
Contract, please.
I mean, $150.
I don't think you can do that. I don't think you can pay somebody.
They can't, they both.
No, they can't, no. I don't think you can have someone who works for the county and works 20 hours a week or whatever it is. And then also have the county pay them the contract later. I think the feds will look at that as trying to get around paying benefits. And we'd be.
And overtime.
And overtime.
May I ask a question? Okay, the person that was doing this before, you know, taking the audits and everything, do they have any, how many hours they were spending, you know, being possible? Just to give them a little.
There was no record of getting any, they didn't push a ton of hot thing.
They just kind of just.
So it happened somewhere. There was no, no employee that, they had someone that took care of it, but it just went over their head. There was no, no record of it. Nobody wrote down, it was out. I did this on this time.
I have to guarantee what they're paying during this time.
Why can't we set a four hour period of when they call in and book it to flexible? To say, you know, it's available Wednesday through Friday from noon to five, it's every day. Call and make the appointment to book instead of just throughout the whole week. And where people know that call Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Monday or Tuesday, or whatever, schedule the call to look at it or to book it. Or have, have they available to book it online to you, play you this. This doesn't have to be a full-time bill. It could be a part-time bill, it could be the four hours you're setting.
Yes, well, they, perhaps, you know, they could call, you could call Monday through Friday to schedule it. It really doesn't take long to schedule an appointment. But you only have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to work the show.
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
That's where we were booked.
I was, well, we make it where it would be convenient for the people booking it where we wouldn't be having to fight to get to them or, you know, have to, okay, we have to make an appointment or whatever. We can make it as convenient for them as we could. It's what I was, I was hoping we could do.
Well, then we need to make it, it doesn't need to be too inconvenient or we're only going somewhere else.
That's exactly another thing. I don't, don't want to go from one extreme to the other.
Well, I think once they know that those times are available, that will be convenient. Our problem is we didn't have a budget to do this. So we're having to adjust to it now. It's, that's something, that's something that won't go way over a budget right now and allow the people to book. You know, call on a Monday or Wednesday, I don't like to make a difference to people because they're trying to book.
Well, they're going to have somebody to talk to.
Sure. Now, we have somebody.
Right, so you put on our website, call.
Call who?
Well, that's what we're going to figure out somehow.
We're going to have to hire somebody.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to keep our personnel, whether we hire down to the minimum right now by doing this, booking for two or three days a week, the showings. To minimize our overhead for staff and everything else like that.
So is it $20 a week, $15 an hour, enough? We need more people. I don't know, that's why y'all are here to discuss it.
That's why we were going to do. Here's another deal, if we hired somebody to do the bookings, they don't know whether they're going to be called.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you put it on, you put it on the website and just to book call, you call something, you know, eight to five, Monday through Friday, or from noon to five, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Wednesday. You set the hour to let the people know when they get called.
But a lot of people don't have their website.
You, you gotta have it.
Well, we have to advertise.
We have to, we have to advertise it. I don't want to limit them to this time and this time because it frustrates me when I've got to wait to, to do something, wait to make a call for somebody and wait to do this. If it's kind of an option that I could call or do at any time. Just use this as an example. Amazon, okay? They have put Sears out of business because anytime you want to call up at 3:00 in the morning and go hard or something for Amazon, you can't. Sears, you can't. That's why they're going out.
The reason on the website, a good example is the collection facility. We have hours of the collection facility plus the pricing on the web page. But yet I get phone calls every week, every weekend on Saturday, my lady's mail. And it's postal.
And you don't have that.
Well, exactly. And that's why you're going to have to have somebody, I don't know how many hours.
Why can't we have, I'm just brainstorming. In the rules of brainstorming, no matter how stupid they are, there's most stupid ideas when you brainstorm. I'm saying that because I've had a stupid idea. Why do we have to have a person sitting there waiting for a phone call? Why can't we have a number that we advertise? And they call the number and it says, you've reached the number for the Wilson County Expo Center. And it gives a brief statement about what it is that we do. And if you will leave your name and number, we will contact you within X amount of time. And so somebody checks that thing once or twice a day. We got a couple of numbers and somebody gets a call. We don't need someone, remember the old mick hair repairman who was just the loneliest guy in town, sitting in a room waiting for something to happen? You know, there's got to be a way where we can list it to where, you know, we can have the information online, but we also have a phone number, call phone number, a nice little message. And then we have someone who has the responsibility of responding to this. I'm betting John could set it up so we'd know how many calls that we got. And maybe we pay someone by the call. I mean, I don't know.
Okay, here's a suggestion.
But, but at least you've got something so when somebody calls, sorry, when somebody calls, they've got something that gives a description of what it is. And we have someone who can call back. Until we know that we've got enough business to where we can justify, you know, Larry Wiley sitting there just waiting for the call when we get this book. And there's, there's got to be an automatic one. When you go to Amazon at 3:00 in the morning, you're not calling the first. At this point, you're going there and you're looking at the menu and you're like, yeah, I know all my books. And so, so people are kind of used to that as long as we respond to them quickly. And we give them a fair amount of information about being a five-minute conversation whenever they call.
Okay, here's a suggestion. Because I was, Tom mentioned this last week. We can put the county judge's number on there for right now. Don't have anything else, I'll work it out. And I'll do the showing and do whatever. Okay, Tom mentioned going to appeal system. Tom mentioned, okay, and y'all have asked, y'all have wanted a lady or a secretary for the commissioners. Okay? So, and you mentioned it, if you go to appeal system, that they probably need one department secretary for all four people, all four commissioners. So why don't we enact that? And this lady or, I say, keep saying lady, that's, whoever, y'all, whoever that is hired to do the job that Tom thinks that, and that, she can be the person that answers the phone Monday through Friday for that.
If we're going to take a step in that direction, I think that probably makes sense. If we're going to take, that's not in the budget.
It's not in the budget. None of this is in the budget. But that is something I know has been talked about over the last year. And I know this person is probably going to be sitting there doing this a whole lot, so this will.
Well, plenty, life in the middle, we have all our equipment, our trucks and trucks, all that stuff. That's something that we're probably keeping individual busy.
Some?
Some, a little bit. Yeah, I think there are another thing that can do to help us collect mail, distribute mail, things like that.
She's going to have to work, or this person's going to have to work to keep herself busy. So this will help.
Oh, yeah, this, this, this could have a lot of time.
You want to charge part of that person's payment in this budget that we're creating?
Yes.
In proportion, what I have here, $20 a week, $15.
Yeah, 50%, I would say, 50%.
At least for a start.
I mean, it could be a situation where, well, I'm not sure we need secretary. We're going to at one, I'm not sure we're there. But this could be, you know, a situation where this person can take on a bunch of responsibilities. I mean, you know, they can make the call, they can do the showing, they can.
Well, I could call for an individual as a dispute. Well, my, my property, I did a survey, it's in the middle of the street, property pen. This individual could go pull records for us from the unit's office, and stuff like that. We could keep this individual. I know I can, I can come in from my brickstone store.
Whose number are you going to have last hours?
No.
You're going to have to have it somewhere for hours. You got to have a number if somebody has it rented and at 10:00 on Saturday morning, the AC breaks, who they going to call? I ain't putting my number out there because I've got enough calls. I'm just being honest, it's going to happen.
Well, that's what we're.
That's what we're already discussing.
We're going to have to have somebody, we're going to pay somebody.
Now, here's the deal.
That's a maintenance issue. I mean, that, that's a, that's a maintenance issue.
Are you going to have that maintenance employee answer the calls?
You have the lady from, from Jan's office or the lady who's, or a man, or whatever it is, who's assisting commissioners out there. This is somebody to take the call, I mean.
I don't mind because I get the calls in the way. Anything that breaks down in the courthouse, if something happens down there, you'll give them a call and I'll get somebody down there.
Because that number's going to be publicized. When you sign a contract with the county, who did that, whoever's renting that facility, who they going to call?
I don't know that you would let a person call.
You want to, you want to be the one they call, well, that's fine.
But it comes on our main event.
I, I guess the question is, is that, the irony of the facility. And I've got 10 o'clock, whatever it is on Saturday, and I get there and it's in July in America if you're ever in work. The longer I'm going, we're all going to get that network and what we have to do, whatever. I mean, they could call you, they could call me, they could call the judge. They could, they could call who needs you, but, you know, the only, they got somebody that they're going to make aware, what do we do?
We have a contract with the AC man that takes care of the courthouse and the whole facility. He's going to be on contract, just like the courthouse coming out.
Yeah, we have to have a designated contract for.
Exactly, we got to have somebody that's making the outages, that's right.
I mean, we got the same people that work on here that are in here, they can work on their.
Yeah, I know, they, I mean, the individuals call, have to make a call to the number to report the problem. If they call that person, they call.
If you make that contract and they sign it, that name's supposed to be in the contract. That's the way it's going to be.
But, but, back to the other issue, I think if we ended up hiring someone who spent a portion of their time assisting commissioners and a portion of their time taking care of that. You know, I could probably be the person that takes the call, they'd probably be the person that would show up here. Because I think there will be, essentially what we're going to do with Christine, listen to individual, but maybe expanding even a little bit. Because I think that person's not in favor. You know, license plates, you got a timing, you know, license plates could wait, could wait until tomorrow or the next day as long as one of them against. And I think that's, that's probably the way to approach it unless we just want to hire a part-time person.
A part-timer? Maintenance person?
No, a part-time person who manages the phone, you know, for the expo center. But that's, you know, you're waiting there for the calls. If you got someone who has double responsibility, then they got something that they do. But there's, there, I'm getting sidetracked a little bit, but there's things that, that a secretary could do. You know, we could all have county websites and have that person be hosting for us. Because another story, another time, we're going to go there. That idea makes sense, or some other idea where you have a position where there is some flexibility. But this one could be a third possibility. If, if we have someone doing that, they don't necessarily have to be in there every. They don't have a hand to every call.
Well, that person has to add the key to, you have to call.
Yes.
Are y'all thinking if we publish the job that we might have some good people respond or?
I think so.
That may be.
Yeah, I think we're all.
I think we're full-time.
We think full-time, they're going to split it.
Yeah.
So we're really going to have a full-time.
There's a full-time position.
And so, yeah, I'm, I'm sure we'd have some people.
I think so too.
I have no doubt.
I think that's the best way to go.
Yeah, that is. Well, let's please establish a half position here in this budget, we're here to discuss the budget, okay?
Okay, but then, then that is part of this budget, so we have to have somebody to take care of this.
Right.
Is this here.
So, so after hours, this 20 hours, that's 85, right? For three days.
No, every day, Paul.
But that's nothing, but this budget, this.
Yeah, that's, that's basically.
So, yeah, this is what we proposed.
20 hours, I understand. But so maybe get called then on a Saturday or a night, that's overtime.
Are we going to put this person in charge of, of going out there and doing the management, so we can contact person out there if they don't have what we can?
Definitely overtime. Anytime they get called, one minute.
I think they're going for 40 hours.
They're going to be working for us.
Right?
This person's going to show and we're going to book. And that's all they're going to do. Well, they're not working for the commission.
Okay, this.
Well, yeah.
Have an idea.
That's over 40 hours.
Why don't we establish this job to work Wednesday through Sunday? How long do I need to do? And while they can be out there showing, opening, progressing issues on the weekend when it's been you guys to walk.
I don't, no, I mean, it's a good idea, but it's going to be Saturday. I don't, no, I mean, it, it's a good idea, but it's going to be to Saturday and Sunday, and if, if, say, if it's not booked on Sunday, this person's.
Yeah, and a lot of the person would.
But why do you choose to become a booking, so?
I mean, we got this budget here, twenty hours a week, right, half, half of that employee salary, the other half is coming out of the commission's course, so that's forty hours a week, they work.